All right, and now being 1:00 PM, I call today's Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58. The recording is not to be considered a public record. The minutes will serve as the public record of the proceedings today. All right. So, our first part of our agenda is going to be an update from Rob Farlott of the Highway Department.
Not here.
Yeah, that's fine.
I can just take two and I'll get her one for the file.
Thank you. All right, well, I guess to start off with, our Waste Management contract expired 7/31. I think some of you guys know that and what's been going on. The first renewal contract that came through was unacceptable, that their increases were huge and they shouldn't have done. My head colleague contacted Todd Cole from DEP. He went to his superiors to discuss, to see what they thought of it. We approached town council to see what they thought of it. Upon a phone call with Heather from Waste Management explaining our reluctance to sign, she realized that she had sent us the wrong contract, supposedly. So she sent out another one with much better rates, which was, I think, like an eight percent increase, which kind of had been following along the normal status quo, I guess, of increases for it. Town council is waiting for the insurance approval, which they did get today, or the insurance break down of it.
Yes.
So they would get that today. Once the contract is approved, it will be sent to Waste Management for final negotiations. We'll see how well that goes. The Highway Department has two infrastructure projects in the works, one on Colchester and one on Winnetoxit. Colchester, we had a catch basin start to collapse, so we are changing that one out. And we had a culvert that was rotting out on Winnetoxit, and so that's why I didn't final pave that road last year. That was just a level bind there, so they're changing out the culvert. They're finishing up right now, and they're moving to the catch basin on Colchester Road tomorrow. And then those should be put to bed. I met with PJ Keating on Wednesday. They finally came out to do over top coating of Winnetoxit and paving of Maple Street, which is our worst road on our pavement management program right now. They're also leaving Ben Tratt. I think that's due to be updated. So after they do Maple Street, I will reach back out to them and have them updated. I think every three years I try to have that done. That way they're, you know, they pave one road a year and it kind of keeps you in which ones are worse and which ones are better. I spoke with Cody Holow from Mass DOT relative to a water issue in 106. After they completed paving, he's going to be coming back out in the near future for his onsite consults. I don't know if anybody's seen, it's still pumping water in the same area as it was before they paved down in the area of Sheffield Park. It still holds about that much water. It's a hard area, I guess, because of the transitional change. Instead of having the normal crown, it goes to what's called a super elevated. But they picked the whole road up and tried to run it across, where the middle's a little bit lower than what I'd like. So they're going to try to figure out what they can do, whether they mill a section out and repave that area. I mean, I'm not fond of it, but I don't want the water pounding. It's an accident waiting to happen. I'm also going to be bringing up again, I brought it up to him a half dozen times now, about trying to get Route 58 on the pavement management program. He's going to, when he comes out for that, he's going to look at 58 for us, which would be great if I could get that. After the accident with the flail mower, I've been working with Breed to process the insurance claims to enable us finalized settlement for its replacement. I think you might know, and you might know, they did total the flail, so the flail is no good. The tractor's going to be going in for repairs too, at some point in the not-too-distant future, once all that stuff is squared away. And then we can process, figure out how to process or purchase, whatever you want to call it, a new flail. Probably need, I might be able to swing some out of my budget. I might need something because it's kind of an unexpected expense. I think they're giving us just shy of $17,000 for the old one. A new one is probably in the ballpark of about $40. It's $34 to replace the existing one that we have, but if we're going to replace it, I prefer to try to find something a little more durable. If I can pay some out of Highway, I don't know, we're going to have to sit down and talk, let's get some better numbers. Further note, hazardous waste day, cost increased from five, increased to $5,000 from $4,500 last year. The response decreased from 48 to 37, so we had a little less turnout. We're still going to hold hazardous waste day. It's a good little thing for the town. The building generator that originally came from the Denit, that has failed. I think two of you might know that. It failed a couple of months ago. The motor on it let go. So we have removed the existing. We had them come out, they disconnected the wires to the generator. We picked the generator up, moved it. We demoed the concrete pad that was under the old one. The new generator's larger, so we had to make a new larger pad to accommodate that, which is done. We are waiting for them to come in. They're figuring sometime in the first week or two of September, we should have our new generator. That's already been accommodated for. The majority of streets in town have been swept. I think there's like maybe six left right now, and they're out sweeping as we speak. Not that we want to think about winter, but we do, we started the salt sand consortium. They already reached out to us, so we sent all our numbers into them in the process of starting the salt sand and liquidized melt bids for the year. I think that's about it.
On top of the flail mower, I know that we lost, but you still were able to get somebody else to help out with that, as we discussed.
Yes, yep. A subcontractor from town to do some flail mowing for us. Hopefully that continues to work well. I mean, he's doing an okay job with it. He, you know, there's still some little speary things, but on the whole, he's doing a really good job, better than we can do at the moment, so.
Right.
I said to you, I don't want to not do nothing, because then it becomes a real.
Correct. Visibility issues and safety issues too.
Now, without the flail mower, anything we have to do is all handwork. It's all pole saw, chainsaw, chipper, which takes much more time and more manpower, because you're not sending out just one person. You send out a crew of at least two.
Correct. And they have people in the street too, so.
Yeah.
More risk of down too.
More chances of somebody.
Considering our problem came from an accident.
Yeah.
We'll keep that in mind as well.
At least he wasn't, it was a medical, so that was, makes you feel a little better, I guess.
Good on you for going out to outsource that, to get the subcontractor on getting that done too, so we can continue with the processes.
Bob got very thankful he was willing to accommodate, because there really isn't too many people around that even remotely want to do flail mowing. It's not, it's like a dying thing. I don't know how or why, considering all the roads that are around, but yeah. Anybody have any questions and anything, comments?
The eight percent from Waste Management is what you were expecting in long.
We budgeted for 10.
Okay. That was going to be my.
Yeah. No, we planned for an increase. Go back to that too. I spoke to the Wiz. I'm going to try to in the next, so we got a, they wanted to give us a 30-day extension. We got a 45-day extension, so that's what we're trying to iron out all the contract negotiations with it, or whatever you want to call it. Over the, it's going to be a three-year contract with two one-year options to renew. But in the three years, I'm going to be trying to price out purchasing packers and containers, because we all lease those right now from Waste Management. We probably have money in, we do have money in the bag account. I just got to get some, I think you looked into it and you thought it was okay. The guy from DEP thinks it's okay. We can probably purchase some of the equipment from Waste Management with the bag fund, the revolving account for the bags that we have. Pay as you throw bags. So I should, if I get it in the next three years, we can probably buy all of our packers and some of our containers. We've already gone to buying some containers, raw material recovery, we purchased two. So we no longer have lease payments of containers anymore with them. It's, I think they were like five grand apiece, but over the course of a year or two, they pay for themselves and then, you know, after that, we own them, and it doesn't cost us anything. Trying to think of anything else I missed. It's a squirrel just ran through here. I think that's about it. Anybody have any questions? You look like you do.
I do. Less a question and comment, great presentation, great handout.
Thank you.
Sounds like you got your hand, your finger on things.
I try, I do.
You are.
I do. I mean, I'm not perfect, but I do try to do as best I can.
That's impressive.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Can we get this public speaking thing under your belt? You'll be doing presentations at town meeting in no time.
Yeah, no, no, no. It's only you guys, so I don't feel so bad. It's not a room full of a couple hundred where I feel like I'm going to keel over. Anybody?
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next agenda item today is going to be the SRO vehicle proposal and DARE invoicing. And both are going to be related to opioid settlement funds.
So the police department is having the old minivan, they're in the process of having that painted, wrapped, and put equipped with some graphics and some little changes inside. And the plan is for that to become the school resource officer main vehicle, and that will free up a police cruiser that doesn't need to be parked down at the school all day. We bring in revenue from the cruisers, like when they're out on details and stuff. And so we believe that this fits into part of the purposes. There's a whole document that outlines the purposes for opioid settlement funds, for the spending of those. So we were looking to have that done. It's $3,500. And then as far as the DARE invoice, my suggestion on that one for now would be to table it, because we just want to look into some other, some other things. It looked like there used to be a gift account that's now classified as a grant account. I want to look at the accounting on that one a little bit before you make any decisions.
Okay. Comments? Questions?
Is the vehicle just, I mean, it's just.
It's an expectation for the officer, and it would also be the vehicle that they would use, like going to any trainings, going to the DARE camp, going to like community events, things like that. That way it's not taking up a functioning police cruiser in situations when it's not going to be used for police response or for official purposes.
And I would also think that if there was an issue with a cruiser being down for servicing now, you wouldn't be down that extra cruiser if that one was still be able to be utilized as, say, a spare.
Right.
The one with the most miles, obviously.
And it's kept in good working order. I mean, it's an older van. I want to say it's a 2012, but it's in, it's in very good working order. And they have a fleet management program, and Officer Maligno manages that for them and does a very good job keeping all the vehicles up to date as far as maintenance and that sort of thing.
Okay. I propose a motion to process the SRO vehicle expenses from the opioid settlement funds account and to table the discussion regarding the DARE invoicing.
A second, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and moving on, we have the surplus property declaration for powered wheelchairs.
So we received a request from the Council on Aging Director for the Board of Selectmen to declare the COA powered wheelchairs as surplus property, so she can consider donating them. They are not in working order, and we recently had an issue here where the battery pack overheated. And we were very fortunate that, at that time, that Colleen Thompson happened to pop into the building on Sunday, identified a strange odor, and the fire department came over. That could have been a very different outcome, but nonetheless, we don't really have the use for them. Fire department took the defunct ones over to their place for temporary storage, so they're looking for you to make that declaration, so they can move on.
How many are we talking?
Two, I believe.
Discussion? Questions?
We do have two, just so, like not ignoring, that one works, and that one's actually an expensive chair, so she's going to keep that. That's not plugged in though, so there's no fire hazard happening over there. It's the two defunct ones.
Okay. Any discussion or concerns? All right. Propose a motion to declare the Council on Aging's powered wheelchairs a surplus property and authorize the COA director to make arrangements for donation or disposal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next one is surplus property declaration, which is voting booths.
So the town clerk purchased new voting booths that will accommodate more voters at a time, and they're a lot more stable. The old ones, apparently, if people would lean on them the wrong way, there would be a problem. She is heaping the striped curtains that people have grown accustomed to, and she's going to find a way to incorporate those into the new setup, so that it's still traditional Plimpton style. But she's looking to have the old voting booths themselves declared as surplus, and she wants to dispose of them.
Good. Questions? Concerns? Sounds like we have safety concerns with it anyway, if people are going to be rocking back and forth with them, so. Okay. Propose a motion to declare the old voting booths as surplus property and authorize the town clerk to make the arrangements for their disposal.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Next matter. CPC application for the townhouse door.
So the Town Properties Committee had proposed and received approval for a project to replace the doors at the townhouse, the entrance that faces out to Palmer Road. The Community Preservation Committee and, following that town meeting, both voted to fund the project in the amount of $60,000. Some of that funding, most of it was for replacement of the doors. There was some budgeted in there for what'll likely be necessary asbestos abatement and for an architect to essentially GC the project and to handle any specs, bid documents, that kind of thing. Not a lot of work has happened on the project since. We've spent a small amount of money with the architect as far as getting, like a rough idea of some specs and that sort of thing. So we're looking to see what direction we're going in with this.
One of the concerns is, is that this originally, and correct me if I'm wrong, was a project that was slated at about $170,000, correct?
Correct. It was a different, it had a lot more components to it. It had work beyond the entrance into the interior hallway that's upstairs, and some more improvements outside, like basically the stairs that would lead up to the building, like the concrete steps that are out there.
And then it was dropped down to the $65,000 or $60,000 price tag that it currently is at, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And they took a lot of different things out of the plans.
And this is a non-functional door. It's not going to be used as an entrance, because there are two forms of egress on either side of the building that are actually ramp accessible at this point, correct?
Correct. And I believe right now the doors are bolted shut, because we were having issues. They're not weather tight, so our custodian was putting plastic on them in the winter. The plastic would blow down. There's plaster falling down around the doors that he has to keep cleaning up. But right now we're okay, because as you mentioned, the various means of egress were not at risk as far as like the fire department's concerned.
And it also wouldn't be ADA approved anyway, because there are steps to it and there's a landing there as well, after you get beyond that door too, so.
Right.
That would be another issue, I would think, as well. Say the concern would be the amount of money being spent on that, when there are other issues within the townhouse itself, as we sit right now, as far as windows and other things in regards to our basement. It just seems to be a very steep price tag. And I turned to my colleague who's been on Community Preservation to maybe give us some enlightenment on this project, to know why it's so much money and why we're spending this on a door that's not going to be used, so.
And glad to address all that, and many things to say. I've been chair of CPC for 15 years. This isn't my favorite project of the ones we've done, but Town Properties did come to us initially with a much bigger project, $150,000, $160,000. We asked them to reduce the scale of the project, remembering that the CPC money, CPA money could be used for this, because it's historic preservation. So it's a different kind of architecture and a different kind of construction that would be necessary. This project was seen as the first step on much, much more that will have to be done upfront, which almost certainly includes entrances and pathways. So really just the first step on something that needs to be done to preserve the building and historic preservation. Backing up a step, what I might review for a second is what the application process, our application process, is involved in Plimpton. We accept the application September 1st through October 15th. First step is for CPC to meet, review the project, see if we want to move forward, if the intent is to do that. I then contact all boards, commissions, and committees, ask for their input on the project. We have another meeting. We call in the applicant again, usually asking the applicant to make adjustments that might improve it. We then have a public hearing. There is then a vote of CPC. Finally, annual town meeting. So the point being, every project that we CPC brings to town meeting is very heavily vetted along the way. Citizens have every opportunity, sometimes three, four, five meetings, an opportunity to come in and comment, and we didn't have any comments along the way. Again, this isn't my favorite project. We have worked really hard over the last 15 years to get a lot of bang for our buck. We're a little tiny town of modest means. This project, I think, isn't going to sort of manifest its value until we do all the rest that has to be done upfront. One other big piece here is certainly there's all kinds of stuff in this building that needs to be replaced, but CPA funds can only be used for the historic preservation part. So of course, if we wanted to do replacements windows in this room, we couldn't, at least with CPA money. So having said all that, I, the bigger piece, I think, is the concern if there were any consideration of voting to take back that money to not do the project. We run into all kinds of problems right off the top of how to do it, because it's so rarely done. Had a brief conversation with town council, who said a town meeting vote would not be needed to stop the project, who felt that simply a vote of the Town Properties Committee and a vote of Board of Selectmen would be sufficient. Okay? Made clear, though, complex issue, needed a lot more research to better understand, because it's something so rarely done. We checked with Community Preservation Coalition, which advises us for free as part of our annual dues. Interestingly enough, in contrast to what town council has said, he said simply a vote of annual town meeting would be sufficient to stop the project. Either way, from my perspective, part of my job, part of the Community Preservation Committee's job in general is to act as ambassadors for CPA, a wonderful legislation that's done so much good in this, in this town and around the state. If we did not have CPA, if we were not part of it, we would not have Cato's Ridge, we'd not have Two Brooks at this point, we probably wouldn't have Turkey Swamp either. So those were much bigger projects. It shows the value of CPA to start messing around with the possibility of very highly vetted projects that could be thwarted halfway through. I think sets a horrible precedent and also gets into a legal quagmire that I would hope we wouldn't get involved in, going to cost a lot financially, and would be one more thing to consume a lot of time when there are so many other projects to do. So sorry to go on and on on that, but I, my point being, this isn't the sexiest project, but it was a well-vetted project, and it seems reasonable to continue with it. Much more importantly, I think the quagmire and the precedent of trying to stop a CPA-approved project is really, really dangerous territory. That was one big, long sentence.
That was, you came up. Sorry. Mr. Russo, I appreciate your time with us. The concern that has arisen with this is, of course, is that it's doing a project involving tax money in this town, where we're all in a, you know, a big issue with taxes. All you need to do is drive around town and see how many people are selling their homes. So one of the concerns with this would be is spending money on a door that's not going to ultimately be used, and that there are actually means of egress on either side of that building. And then would there be a better way of using that funding? And also, is there a better way of looking at that project to do it maybe slightly differently? It's already been looked at once and knocked down from one price, which was pretty high, albeit that there were other projects with it. Being that this building is utilized on a regular basis, at least four to five times a week, with people coming in and through here, there are the issues with it, plus the people who work here. To create a good environment for them as well, it just seems to be a little bit of an issue when you start talking about a door that's not going to be utilized for anything other than cosmetic purposes. And I understand the part about the historic part of it, but there are other parts of this building that are not really being kept up to those standards. We have the aluminum doors over there, and we have vinyl siding on the building and so forth that don't match what it historically would have been when it was built too. So it just raises a question on the basis of what the project is, and letting people understand that that's how much money is being put into this project as well. So that's just where I stand with it. Mr. Sides has any comments?
I share your concern about the price tag. I think, you know, $60,000, to me, not being not a builder, I, it seems excessive to me, but I don't know. However, I agree with Mr. Russo, that I think ultimately, there's a process in place that, while we may not agree with the outcome, I think the process was there. It was followed. It was followed to the T. Ultimately, it came before the town, the full town, to have their opportunity to comment and vote at town meeting. Honestly, I don't, I don't remember noticing the price tag when it came up at town meeting, and shame on me for that, because I'm a voter like everyone else. So I think, at the end of the day, I would think we need to allow, just because the process played out the way it was supposed to. I think we need to allow this project to continue the way it is, with maybe a reminder to the folks involved, that if they can find a way to shave 20%, that we would appreciate them doing that. And then maybe going forward, we all, myself included, need to do a better job of paying attention.
I agree. I think also that some of the things we've discussed, or at least I've discussed, are brought up as some issues over this time period, of me being here at least, is that I think that there needs to be more out to people. I understand there's meetings. I understand there's multiple meetings for various things, but having those meetings on YouTube through Area 58, as it's beginning to do so, I mean, we're up to about 90, 95%. Those meetings being available for people, because not everybody can be here for meetings, including ours today. So I think some of the problems come from the fact that, yes, meetings were done, but I don't know that necessarily everybody in this town understood what the price tag was going to be for this door, what the door project was. I'm not saying anything as far as what, you know, you folks did on the CPC, but as far as getting it out to people on a regular basis through social media or otherwise, it's very helpful for people, because then they can access it at a different time. Not just being able to say, well, I couldn't make it to the meeting, so I don't know. And that would be my concern, is that going forward, that there's more, that people understand what goes on. Because that price tag seems to be very steep. I understand those funds are there for that. I understand that it has been vetted. I understand it's supposed to be historically accurate, but at the end of the day, it's still a door that's not going to be utilized in this building. And there are a lot of other concerns with it, which I do know are not historically there, but it just seems to be a concern. So what I would suggest is, is that, you know, maybe we have, as Mr. Sides, I second him on that, that TPC looks at. on that, that TPC looks at it a little bit more closely and see what they can do to maybe shave some of that money off of it going forward. So I make a motion at this point, just to have TPC revisit this project a little bit to look at what the price tag is and just see what they can do as far as, you know, keeping it a little more fiscally online and see what they can do. Not, and not disregarding what has been done to this point, but keeping that in mind.
Couple of hands up in the crowd if you want.
Mr. Moran?
Yes, from a taxpayer's perspective, there've been a few people that have spoken with Jason Frazier, and even he agrees, this might be a great project of a school, to duplicate that front door at a greatly reduced price.
It's not a school.
The school, the door, yeah. The trade, okay? Could be no labor involved. The town would have to pay for the, pay for the materials. You could probably duplicate the thing down to whatever degree you wanted, and it would save the taxpayers money. And I'm not concerned about the process, okay? And I think the chairman is right. We can't all get here at all of the meetings. There's been some, I've been looking for one particular meeting, I've been reading the July meeting minutes, fine, but yet I haven't found them on YouTube yet. And that's one of our probably most important committees, and that's the finance committee. And what's going on there? And I understand that's an elected board, I also serve on an elected board, and we did discuss it on my board, and we voted to have it filmed, fine, who cares? That's great, but the people know what's going on. But there's no FinCom yet, and I'm wondering why. But getting back to the front door, you could bring that in a lot less expensive. And I think the committee that has been attracted to that, they could look at things with, trying to save the taxpayers' money. CPC funds are taxpayers' money. That's a tax on our bill. That comes up on our tax bill, state tax bill, every time we get one in the mail. So it's taxpayers' funds, and we need to be careful of that. The taxes in this town and other towns, too, are rising rapidly. You've got to pay attention, pay attention to the money. And you, ultimately, you're responsible, be the lion at the door. FinCom should be the lion at the door, watching our funds.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
Deb had her hand up, too.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, Deb Anderson, Elm Street. I think that the major part of the bill, as it was presented to CPC, is for structural repairs around the door. And once you get into any kind of structural repairs, which I understand are considerable, that's where the majority of your money is. I'm sorry that the chairman of the properties committee isn't here to defend the bill, but that's where most of, most of, and you know that if you get into construction and you get into the structural part of it, that's a huge expense, even in the wrong house. So that's why we did, we did ask them to bring the cost down somehow because, and It's not wasted money. It's money that you're going to have to spend one way or the other, and you can either spend it through taxpayers' money by raising the tax rate for everybody, or you can spend it with money that's already there, much of which is from the state match funds that if we didn't have CPC, we'd never see. We try to do things that are in the best cost-effective manner, and we have, we can't do everything ourselves. We have to trust the people who bring the projects to us. And even though we go through them and check them out, and it just doesn't, it's very frustrating. I can get out to make it to meetings. People should be able, if they're interested, should come to meetings. Meetings are all posted. I saw this one posted, and I came down to speak. The process, the process is about as open and transparent as you can be. We just had a little item in the newspaper about the project, the time for submission is coming up, so get ready. Once the projects come into us, couple of years, there were no projects. So the bunny sat there and waited for a bigger project. It's, it's just frustrating that if we make it available, make the information available to everybody, to have you people tell us that we're not, we're not doing a good enough job getting the information out there.
Couple of small points. I don't mean to belabor this, just a reminder to everyone, the state matches, our CPA funds varies from year to year, often 20% to 30%. So, you know, when we're talking about $60,000 to this project, really, the tax money is 20, is, with the state match, it's really only $45,000. Most importantly, and I think it's been alluded to, but I just can't stress this enough, the Community Preservation Committee in this town is absolutely proud of the fastidiousness of our process. We would absolutely welcome filming. We like being on camera. Better yet, we, you know, we're blessed, that committee is blessed, probably the most fun committee in town. People come to us with good projects, we help them fix it up. We actually have money to do them as versus so much other stuff in town. So sure, the more the people see that process and see how utterly functional it is, the better.
I agree as well. That's what I've been saying since I've come in here, because one of the things is, is that's, once again, I don't want to counter belabor this point, but it has been said a number of times about people who have not attended meetings, and unfortunately, our modern society as it is, doesn't function that way. We have people working two and three jobs that are not available to be here at different times. And to be able to do that means them taking time off of work, which they can't afford. And my main concern is the tax rate in this town and the fact that if that keeps on climbing, we're driving people out of this town. And that was my allusion to the fact that if you drive around the town, you see an awful lot of signs for sale in this town for people trying to leave this town. We're losing people from this town. So I understand the frustration of this is the way it has been done, but even in the case where we discussed this, and I don't want to bring up bad, you know, old business, but with the fire station, one of the arguments was, we didn't want to put it on social media. The TPC did not want to put it on social media, debated. What happened? Went to town meeting, and it was debated on social media from that day until the election day. And that's where it all got played out, because people were talking on social media, because that's where they actually get a lot of their information. People have their phones, that's what they get their information on nowadays. Unfortunately, it's not a question of whether you, you know, you like it, it's recognizing where modern media has headed, and that's where it is. People can be at work in Boston and be able to have a little downtime on their break and be able to watch a meeting on YouTube, and you can't be necessarily in Plimpton. They could be in someplace else, you know, wherever they are at work, and they can use that. Or they could be at home late at night, when they have it, at their convenience to be able to watch that. And I know convenience isn't necessarily the best word to use, but it is reality. So, Ms. Anderson, you had another question?
Yes, did you just say it was CPC that did not want it on?
No.
By the station?
No, this was, this was TPC. This was John Wilhelmsen saying that he did not want to debate this. He did not, yes, he did not want to debate this on social media. And then what happened was, he actually, and it's all on record, because all of social media is out there, it was him answering those questions on social media, which could have been answered months before, had it been actually played out as far as those meetings aren't being on YouTube and allowing people to understand that. So one of the purposes in me bringing this up today, as far as that goes, and the amount of money that's being on us, is to have that discussion. And now we are on YouTube, and we are discussing it, and the townspeople understand what these things are and what's going on, as opposed to having meetings that you yourself and Mr. Russo both alluded to, that people were not here. People were not at the meetings, they didn't know. So my question would be, is, is that if we want to continue on this path, are there other projects that are going to come up that maybe the town doesn't know exactly what the price tag is going to be? I mean, we dropped it from $170,000 to $60,000. That's a pretty significant drop, albeit we have state matching funds, which is a good thing. Right now, we have them, but what happens when those go away? So these are just some things I'm looking forward towards the future, and also with this particular project. Like I said, I used to work in this building, and I know there's a lot of things that have happened in this building as far as, you know, the age of it, construction issues. I mean, that's just the tip of the iceberg that's sitting behind us. It just seems to me that when we're spending money on things, spending money on a door that's never going to be used as a door, it just seems like it's a project that I understand, yes, there's structural issues and everything else, and our value, but it's, it's not even a form of fire access, because you have two means of egress, and you also can't use it for that anyway, because it's not ADU-approved with steps going up to it and a landing. So that was basically my concern and how this kind of came to be. So...
Doors could still open, and people could still get out, it's just people in wheelchair perhaps might not be able to. That's, that's silly, unless you're going to, excuse me, that was a poor word, unless you're going to board up the doors and just really have a wall there and not use them at all. They are doors. If they're going to be replaced, and because it's an historic building, they should be replaced in the manner that, that they were designed. We all do our best.
I appreciate that, and I've said that since day one, you know? Volunteerism in this town is a huge part of this, you know? I mean, I'm doing this on my own time as well, so, I mean, this is not something I'm getting paid to do. So I understand the volunteerism, and I give everybody kudos for doing so and stepping up, because it's not an easy thing to do, and it does consume a lot of time. But the other side of it also is, let's be more effective. Let's reach more people in what we're doing. Let people know what's going on with these projects. Let them know exactly what's going on when we bring an article forward at a town meeting, you know? And the aspect of doing some of the things like, we had the ADU article in the town meeting. And in that case, that ADU article went on for like two or three pages to basically say what? What it said was, we're in compliance with the state, ultimately. But yet, when you're reading it as a private resident, here in a taxpayer, you're looking at all this other legalese that goes down of what everything in ADU is, everything else. But there's no condensing of that for the person to say, "Okay, this is what we're doing." So as far as any of these meetings go, by having those meetings out there, talking plainly as we have today, in talking about the various parts of it, now people have a better understanding. I would argue after today, they have a better understanding about this project than they did 20 minutes ago.
It's possible. So is the solution that you see that CPC meetings are, should be now filmed?
Yes, absolutely. I believe that, and we've, pretty much like I said, about 90, 95% of the boards are now being recorded on YouTube and being accessible. Mr. Moran said there's some other glitches with that. I know sometimes when I try to look it up, it's difficult to find a particular meeting, so you have to kind of play around with it. That's something that we can talk to Mr. Gilard about as far as accessibility to those meetings, but for the most part, all the boards have been very agreeable to it. Mr. Russo himself just said that, that, you know, we want to have that in there.
It was my understanding that we were limited to the number of meetings that, that could be recorded without additional cost to the town.
That was not indicated to me in my most recent communication with Rich from Area 58. He was willing to take on more boards and committees.
All right, but that's more recent than perhaps the two or three years ago than now?
Right, right.
Yeah, that policy has changed. Just some clarification?
Absolutely.
We're not getting paid for this?
No.
Oh my God.
Was that the paycheck you got for all this time? You didn't know that either? Wow.
I was promised a dollar.
I was, I was promised three, but I think it was a dollar, yeah. So again, part of the reason why is to bring up the fact of getting this out there to people so they understand what's going on with this project, as opposed to having it done, and then all of a sudden, somebody goes, "Well, how come that costs $65,000 to replace a door?" And there are ways around this to deal with it. My other concern would be is, can we look at other things as well? And I'm not saying anything on your committee or otherwise, but are there other ways of looking at it, like Mr. Moran had suggested about giving it out to the VOTEC? Could they possibly be part of it, too, to bring some of the cost down and give the kids an opportunity to do a historic project? I think that would be great for the town. We have people in town, Mike and Jen, who run Full Circle Homes, which are, they've done such great job in revitalizing so many different homes in this town. I would be daring to say, but by legal definition, they're experts in the field. That means they know more than the average person about renovation. I would hope that they have been, you know, maybe consulted, give them a little phone call and say, "Hey, what do you think about this project? Is that a possibility?"
Well, getting back to Mr. Moran's comment about using the VOTEC students, and also keeping in mind that it is perhaps more complex than just replacing the door, there must be some sort of a scope of project available, you know? Could it be provided to the school system to see if it's something they feel they could handle? Rob, do you, sorry?
Sorry, I was a Vokey.
Did you build my house?
I don't know, huh?
Did you build my house? How long ago were you, no?
No, no, I was a metal fab.
Too old for you.
I was a metal fab. The vocational department has built houses from metal fab, like if somebody brought in a blueprint, we would work off blueprints. If you have an architect design it, they can do it. And like he said, it's pretty much materials only, which is huge. I mean, they could serve a lot of purpose and a lot of deal with buildings for us.
I mean, I, you know, I'm assuming the project has not been put out to bid yet. If we, if we can include them in the, in the RFP process, then...
Okay.
Where's the harm in that? And if it saves us a few grand, why not? And, you know, as Mr. Smith said, you know, it provides a good opportunity and a sense of pride for the students as well, and accomplishes, as long as we're, as long as we're staying true to the historical process and obviously, you know, good building practices, then, you know, let's, let's try to involve them. No harm.
No.
They do have, at least when I was at...
They're probably booking three years out. Yeah, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And like I said, consult, I think we have resident experts to discuss this with. They've done this, they're constantly doing it. And Mr. Lemieux, actually, he volunteers his time on the FinCom. So I think it's something to look outside of the box on some of these projects a little bit more, and just to kind of extend into those type of opportunities that we may be presented. So any further discussion on this? Can we move on? Any more, Mr. Russo? So I'd have to make a motion on this one then.
I think we already did.
Dana had made the motion, nobody had seconded yet.
I'll second it. What have you said?
To revitalize it, basically, to advise, my motion would be to advise the TPC Town Properties Committee, as their appointing authority, to revisit this project in a more fiscally responsible way and looking at things to be done outside the box, for lack of a better term.
But just to clarify, we're not pulling the plug on it?
Correct.
Okay, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to vote no. I totally prefer consensus, but I think this is still a lot of pitfalls in the minefield. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Moving on to warrants paid.
Warrants paid came out to $139,683.37, and this is all invoices paid since July 1st, specifically including our insurance premiums. That's why it's so high.
And now on to town administrator updates and correspondence.
So the first item I have for you in correspondence is the fiscal year 2025 line item transfers and closeout review and vote. Finance committee has already reviewed and voted on these. I just need a vote of this board so that we can close the loop on this process.
Okay, make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 line item transfers for closeout.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I comment first?
Yes, sir.
As a recent refugee from the finance committee, I... As a recent refugee from the finance committee, it's troubling that, that this keeps happening to this extent every year. I mean, you know, some of these transfers are significant amounts of money. And it just seems as though, I know every year when we were asked to review this at the finance committee, it seemed as though some of these, for lack of a better phrase, came out of nowhere. We were unaware that, that certain departments were in danger of exceeding their budget. So, and I don't know what's been provided to you folks in the past. Obviously, I'm, I'm new to this. I'm speaking for myself. I would like some visibility going forward into where we stand on a regular basis in terms of accounting. And so I would prefer that we get at least a quarterly, at least a quarterly update and then maybe towards the end of the fiscal year, it becomes a monthly update on, on where, where the departments are in relation to what their budget was. You know, as an example, you know, we have a couple of the larger departments. Their, their payroll budgets were apparently exceeded by, you know, six to eight percent, which is a lot of money. We're talking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That didn't happen overnight. So, so, you know, we, and I, and I understand that there, there are explanations and reasons behind it, but I know when we were on the FinCom, when I was on the FinCom and the FinCom as currently constructed, feels a certain amount of frustration about not being brought into the loop earlier, earlier in the process. And so they feel as though they're being asked to, to approve something after the damage has already been done. And I think that, that's kind of what we're doing here too. So I, again, it's more of a comment than anything, but I think, I think we need to, we need to know what's going on earlier in the process.
That would be relatively easy to implement. The town accountant is supposed to send out monthly updates. I can work with her to ensure that those are coming out every single month because sometimes we'll be on track for a little bit and then we don't get the reports. But I think it would be more helpful perhaps if she goes through them and anywhere that like, so the reports will tell you, for example, how, what percentage of the year we're through and then what percentage each budget line is spent.
Right.
So anywhere that she sees a large discrepancy, maybe she could type up a little memo. We could have it, finance committee could have it. And then, you know, it would just help in, I, I think, like making decisions moving forward.
I think that's perfect. I think that's perfect, exactly what I'm looking for. And I think, you know, and, and again, understandably, some of these issues are unavoidable.
Right, right.
I mean, you can't, you can't avoid somebody going out on a medical leave and we need to replace. I, I understand that, but you know, again.
But maybe if we had a monthly update though, I think. And then it doesn't even have to be that time consuming. It could be sent to both you and the finance committee. And then if any of you have questions, then we could talk more about it, but.
I enthusiastically concur and we've had that in the past and we've had the what percent of the year and what percent of the budget, but it just has been inconsistent and whether quarterly or monthly, at least then there wouldn't be surprises.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe, you know, some of these items are addressed earlier in the year. I mean, at the end of the year, maybe, maybe the bottom line is, is no different, honestly. But it just seems as though it would be a better way to tackle it if we handled it, you know, as we go rather than transferring a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the end of the year.
Which we may end up having to do anyway, but at least, at least we knew about it.
Exactly, a hundred percent. I'm not, I'm not arguing that point, but it just, it just would make me feel better as the new guy, you know, to know where, where it came from a little sooner. Definitely appreciate that.
Keep the new guy happy.
Okay, so do we make a motion on that as far as creating a memo or? I don't think we really need to do that, right?
No, I can just, I'll direct the town accountant and I'll.
Well, we never took a vote because I started speaking.
No, that's okay. So that's on me.
Oh, we didn't do the all in favor. So Dana made a motion, Mark seconded, but we haven't voted yet.
Okay. All in favor for the motion to approve fiscal year twenty-two-five line item transfers for closeout?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next item in correspondence is fiscal year twenty-five general transfers semi-annual review and vote. So these are being brought forward to you at the suggestion of our auditor a couple times a year. We can do it more frequently if you want. These are expenses that actually get moved. Typically, it's for grant reimbursements or if the accountant enters in the account number incorrectly, something like that. So these do not involve shortfalls in anything. It's simply changing which account something came out of. And all the reasons have been provided on this sheet and the auditor likes Board of Selectmen to sign off. That's one of our best practices that we implemented maybe, I don't know, a year and a half ago or so.
I won't cut you off this time.
No, that's all good.
Concerns or otherwise?
No concerns.
Okay, make a motion to approve the general transfers as outlined in the memo from the town accountant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then the next thing in correspondence, we have two one-day liquor license applications for Mayflower Market Days. This is scheduled for October eighteenth and nineteenth from eleven AM to four PM. And they've done this multiple years in the past.
I'm assuming there's been no issues with them in the past? I haven't heard of them.
I have heard of none of them. I have no, any issues or otherwise.
Do, do we normally add language in the motion pending approval of other appropriate agencies?
Well, normally we do that for use of town property, but they're not requesting town property use. This will be at forty-one Crescent Street and they do have a licensed server caterer. It's Decanted Inc. So they have all the necessary liquor liability insurance, all of that.
And they don't get a police detail for that?
Um, I don't know if they have in the past. I want to say that they.
When the first few years when they did it, I believe they did have a police detail.
I think they needed one one year because I remember it was like heavy rainfall and there were issues with cars getting like stuck in the parking lot.
They were very good at having a bunch of people do it in traffic.
Since then, they had like flagging people in and they get them off the road as quickly as possible. It is on that bend of the road, so it is something that should be done, but. Okay, further discussion? Okay, propose a motion to approve the two-day, two-one-day liquor license applications for Mayflower Market Days.
Second.
He beat you to it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then the next item in correspondence, we have a use of town property request. This is for the town green for the Plimpton Flower Show, scheduled for September seventh with a rain date of September fourteenth. They are planning to have a food truck and the people for the food truck have been counseled by the Board of Health. They do need to renew their food permit with the Board of Health. And they're already on top of that.
Further discussion?
Just adding the language of approving the request pending approval. Yeah, Board of Health, Police and Fire.
Is that a motion?
It will be. Okay, propose a motion to approve the request for use of town property for the Plimpton Flower Show pending the approval by the Board of Health, the Police Department and the Fire Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
The next item in correspondence is acknowledgement of the sale of three ninety-nine Main Street to remain as sixty-one A. So the Board of Assessors had alerted us to the fact that three ninety-nine Main Street was sold, but nothing at all is changing with the sixty-one A designation. So it's not triggering any sort of right of first refusal or anything like that. But they did request that you provide acknowledgement that you're aware.
All right, clarification for people out there what the sixty-one A is?
Um, it's conservation restriction on the property.
Any concerns, further discussion?
This is the big horse farm. Is that what the property is?
Nothing? Mr. Russo, anything?
Nothing.
No concerns? Okay. I make a motion to provide acknowledgement to the Board of Assessors regarding the sale of three ninety-nine Main Street and that property is remaining as sixty-one A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next in correspondence, we have, this is for a certificate of vote for highway superintendent signatory for highway department contracts. This has come up from time to time. Town council will ask if you've authorized Rob to sign off on certain highway contracts. Typically, the contracts in question are being funded either out of the highway department budget or they're funded by way of articles. And majority of those articles are written that town meetings actually authorizing the highway superintendent to enter into those contracts. So I thought it would be good if we just took a blanket vote and, and took care of that. And it's not changing any other requirements for the contracts, but we can just give it to town council and not have to keep having this come up every time they look at something.
Questions, concerns, discussion?
No.
All right. Make a motion to authorize the highway superintendent to serve as the signatory for all highway department contracts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In minutes?
I have a couple more things too that popped up in correspondence that I just got from what Bree left for me. So this is for Old County, Old Colony Elder Services had asked who Plimpton's representative would be. You tried to vote this in preparation for July first and then I believe at that time Colleen Thompson wanted to just verify. So you've already approved it, but if you could just take another vote now and the motion would be to nominate Dorothy Martel to serve as the Old Colony Elder Services representative for Plimpton. And this would be effective July first, twenty-twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Will this be a motion to appoint her?
Uh, you, you can use that word. Bree set it up with an appointment slip. It's not an official appointment. It's like, like when we name somebody to other regional collaboratives. But for the sake of the form and keeping it the way it was, I guess it's an appointment.
Like when Nate wasn't forgiving of me. I'll bring it up before you do. All right, so it's the Old Colony?
Elder Services.
Elder Services. Okay, I make a motion to appoint Dorothy Martel as the delegate to the Old Colony Elder Services.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also in correspondence, we've received a letter from Brian Kling, our animal inspector. And he is going to be retiring and moving on from his role here as of January tenth, twenty-twenty-six. He's done a wonderful job for us in this capacity. It's not the easiest position to fill. There's a lot involved in it, a lot of pretty important regulations and inspections of all the barns. I'm happy that he's giving us ample opportunity to identify somebody else, but we should probably start looking, start now. It's a very small stipend that he gets and he puts a ton of time into this. So they're going to be big shoes to fill, but at least we have some notice.
Definitely appreciate that.
Then we have here, Xfinity wrote to notify us that our residents no longer have New England Cable News Channel. Who's that? And then as far as my update goes, we're working on pulling together all of the documents for our fiscal twenty-five audit. I did finalize our application to the state just to show that everything was in compliance with the MBTA zoning that got voted at town meeting. There was a whole application process. I think I mentioned it at our last meeting that I had just learned that we had to do like another step, basically. That's been done. I have not heard any feedback from them, so no news is good news. We should be all set there. I'm working with Sergeant Valente at the Police Department and with Brian Vesa, our conservation agent slash website guru. Brian gathered some pricing information for us for upgrading the website, so I have all of that. But now we're looking at like bringing the Police Department on board so that we're not paying for two different websites. So I'll see when we can get something put together for you guys to review and, and see what you think.
Is that going to be changing it to a mobile platform versus like a terminal-based platform?
I hope so. That was my biggest complaint and that's the complaint that I get from everybody. So when Brian set off on this fact-finding mission, it was with the understanding that there's nothing wrong with the website if you go to it from a desktop computer. It's when you try to pick it up on your phone, it's very difficult to navigate. We were told that there would be certain ADA compliance updates that the web platform itself would be making for free. But now it sounds like the regulations may have changed around that and it sounds like we have more time to implement, but it's basically going to be at our expense. So I think we need to look at that closely and make sure that we're planning ahead properly for expenses that may come down the line with that. And then I think that we may have some work to do at the Old Town House. I think I brought you up to speed. I had to visit the building on August seventh. Robbie was gracious enough to join me over there and help me figure out the water situation or lack thereof. We did notice several other issues within that building. So I think maybe I'll put it, I'll put together a report that's a little more detailed maybe than just the email that I sent to you quickly after that day. And I think that we may want to be looking at the future of that building and, you know, how much use is it getting? What do we want it to look like? What do we want it to be? Because it's an asset, we're paying for it.
Do you think it's appropriate as an agenda item for, what is it, September eighth?
Yeah, why don't we do that? I think that would be good.
Agenda to start the discussion so the town folk know, understand what kind of what's going on and in conjunction with your report about how the condition of the building is.
I think that's a great idea. And also, our survey has been completed. Grady Consulting did the survey, so there are visible stakes put up. I did see a couple of PK nails in the like entranceway as you pull in there. And they did send us a plan. So if we ever wanted to move forward in the future with fencing or whatever, at least we know what we own. So that's one thing we can check off the list.
It's always good to have the survey anyway, just because we have other private property on either side of that property as well. Get an idea too, so. It's not a bad thing to have that on file.
And I have not heard back yet from Bill Hayes on the stump grinding. You can't really see them right now because everything's overgrown like around them. Some of the brush is starting to come back up, but that's going to look atrocious in the fall, like when all that stuff comes back.
Dies off, right. Certainly, if you could pursue that, that'd be greatly appreciated to see where that project effectively gets finished at that point. I mean, obviously, the trees are out of there, but the stumps really can't stay like that.
Right.
Any update on the fire station deficiencies?
No, so it's been radio silence. We have not heard anything about the.
I mean, I'm not complaining necessarily, but.
Nope, haven't heard anything about the visit. Nope, haven't heard anything about the visit. The Fire Department, myself and John Wilhamsen from the Town Properties Committee, we've all been on high alert, waiting for something, but we have not received formal notice of the violations yet.
Okay. All right, we have minutes from the seventh and the fifteenth.
Sound good.
You're good?
Yep, sounds good.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written from the July seventh and July fifteenth meetings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. All right, I believe we have nothing else. Anything else to add?
No.
Anything else to add?
It's just the pay thing. I'm a little upset.
Right. Yeah, I know. I was looking forward to maybe actually framing them.
Twelve, so that's twelve dollars.
Yeah, twelve dollars.
I'm on a fixed income now.
Yeah.
How many times have you said that?
I have some things for you to sign.
Just, just for your knowledge, I, you know, one of our upcoming meetings, I will not be present for, so on the twenty-second, I will not be available. So if you folks have a conflict, you may need to reschedule.
Twenty-second. Well, twenty-second is, I think is the one that I can't be at either.
So why don't we plan on the eighth and then we'll reconvene. I'll check with each of you and come up with another meeting date.
Oh.
Oh, forgive me, I take it back. If it's in the afternoon, I could attend, but I, maybe we do need to revisit that, particularly a new selectmen. We make it as easy as possible.
I just need one of you. And this is, this is for Dana.
That one's quick. I didn't know I was going to, which I should date that too, right? That's going to go back there anyway, so.
You found it, Nate?
It's like a paper one.
Oh, it is? Oh, I just assumed it was legit.
No, at least took the legit one.
No, no, that's, that's the one I was trying to-
All right, I think we're done. So at this point, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. We made it through.